Work session, see, not quite, okay. I'm gonna repeat that. Take two. Welcome back, everybody, to Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2014-15. We're gonna begin our open work session tonight with Resolution 103-2014. This is adopting the Public Housing Agency's five-year plan submitted by the Wycomico County Housing Authority. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today for your work session. I do have a handout for everyone, and I have extras if you need one for your council book.
Okay. If you would introduce yourself for the record tonight.
I will. My name is Suzanne Brown.
You say you have one more?
I do. I have two more. My name is Suzanne Brown. Due to the passing of Narsinda Church, our executive director, and whom also worked for the housing authority for 18 years, passed away August 2nd. The Board of Commissioners has appointed me as their interim executive director during their executive director search. I would like to give this presentation, it'll be brief, because I am not a public speaker. And there is a lot of information in here that I really would like all of you to take home as homework.
I wish I had this this afternoon, I wouldn't have read that other map.
But if you have any questions, again, my name is Suzanne Brown. The Wycomico County Housing phone number's there, my cellphone number, my email address. I welcome any opportunity to talk about Wycomico County Housing Authority, and where we've been, and where we're going. But the very first page, I'm just gonna say, "Our mission statement is always to promote adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment free from discrimination." People forget that it's not just bricks and mortars. We serve families. We serve seniors, we serve persons with disabilities. We serve, well, that's what we're in the business to do. I do have two summary pages. Again, you'll see my contact information. And I really have to talk about this Booth Street redevelopment, which is part of our PHA plan for 2014. We recently had a zoning approval for reduced parking, apartment zoning, because it was townhomes, and a waiver for community impact. What I really want council folks to understand is that we have received a $17 million multi-level financing to reinvent affordable housing. It's from the state multiple financing agreements, from the bank, 1.2 million. So the state and its investors with the tax credits believe in us, and we believe in ourselves. And also, there is a new grant that HUD has called the RAD grant. Only 60,000 units were awarded, and they awarded this RAD grant for 100 of our units located on Booth Street. And that has a long-term impact of $14 million, 15-year commitment from the federal government. And that is what subsidizes the rent, because HUD does not have the money to reinvent or to renovate public housing units, and that's what we own on Booth Street. They don't have it. There's 3,500 housing authorities across the country, and we are not the only ones with boarded-up units, we're not the only ones that have occupied units that aren't up to market. So HUD came up with this instrument called RAD. It's a demonstration award, and we are on the forefront. So when we have that groundbreaking, we want you there. We want the shovels in your hand. When we build in 14 months, we want that ribbon cutting, we want you there when we lease to the first family, because all the eyes are on us. Wycomico County, they're on us. Of all the 60,000 units that were awarded, and they do it by units, not by dollars, of all those units awarded, we are only one of three that we're actually demolishing and redeveloping. So all the others are just taking the shell and reinventing the inside. So for this program to work, and it's a demonstration, we want it to work. We also want to use this, we've applied for scattered site, which we have 90 homes throughout the county. We've applied, and we're on the waiting list. But we need for the federal government to raise the amount of units that are being funded. And that's where I need your help, because there is a page in here that talks about, there's boilerplate letters where you can, you know, write to different parties and say that this would be worthy in Wycomico County. Not only because we're already gonna be pioneers with the first 100 units, but we want to do it with the 90 units of scattered site throughout the county. So that information is here, and I'm more than happy to talk about this RAD program, because it is unique. Do you have a question?
Yes. Of the 90 units that scatter about the county, how many of those are empty and in need of repair to get them back up to livable grade?
They all need repair, even the ones that are occupied. We do have a number of them that are vacant, but I also have a second sheet that will address the scattered site, which I hope that the council will be comfortable with. It may not be all the answers as you want right now, but patience and endurance is definitely the name of the game in the HUD world.
So the numbers on that?
Too many.
Yeah. So out of that 90, is that on that sheet? How many is empty?
Too many.
Well, how many?
Over 30.
You've got over 30 that's empty that's, okay.
But as I move forward, scattered site points of interest. We are currently renovating two single-family homes on Lake Street. We are working with the City of Salisbury Police Chief to rehab a vacant unit on Decatur for them to use as a substation. And that's been ongoing for about a year and a half. It's a little more time-consuming when you deal with the federal government and with public housing units. It is what it is, but just know that that process is moving forward. If it comes to tuition, their budget was $10,000, it might be $40,000 to renovate that unit. But at least we're trying, and trying with partnerships with the local authorities. Our capital budget for scattered site is $249,000 and change. Our average renovation to get one of those vacant units onboard is $25,000 to $40,000. So as you can see, that pace may only be five to six homes that we can renovate with our capital dollars. It's not a lot, but we keep plugging away. We have chose two homes to sell, because that seems to be a hot ticket item. And I'm really continuing with Narsinda Church, she had chose these homes before her passing. And I've already started that process to sell these homes. It's not as easy as people think it is. Our Baltimore field office is who we report to. They said that they would help expedite it, but it's a long process, and we will deal with HUD in Chicago. Our RAD grant, we deal with HUD in California, but our field office is the Baltimore field Riverside homes, just to let you know some other things that are happening with the housing authority, is that we did have a major fire that destroyed four homes, and they should come back onboard in September. We also operate a federally-funded housing choice voucher program, or a Section 8, and we currently serve 200 families. And that's all our budget can afford. We do have a waiting list, but HUD keeps, you know, crunching the numbers as well, and we want to keep serving, because we do have a waiting list. But right now, our paycheck from HUD, we spend out to landlords the same day, and we can only serve 200 families.
Suzanne, with regards to the selling of the two homes, will those proceeds go back into your capital budget to improve more?
Absolutely. We want to use that funding to, as capital, to renovate other homes.
I know, unfortunately, the lady passed away, so she can't answer the question. Maybe you can. Of the 90 homes, and there was two chosen to sell, what was the qualifications for those two, and why was there just two?
There may be more, but Narsinda Church believed that she wanted children to be proud of where they lived, and she did not think where these two homes are located, was even renovated, that a child would live there. Whatever's neighboring these two homes, she didn't think was favorable to a family, so she would like to take them off of our public housing inventory.
Ms. Brown, do you mean that the homes will be sold to the persons or families that live in them? Is that the letter?
Well, they're vacant right now.
Oh, they're vacant, thank you.
And if you go to page two, and this will be the end of my talking, scattered site history, because I really want to show the council that we are trying. The housing authority, unfortunately, 20 years ago, went through 10 years of mismanagement, and then went through 10 years of being labeled as troubled, and that's a numeric designation from HUD. So it takes a while to get brought out of that. We have been, we've had clean audits, and that reminded me when your auditor was here. We have had clean audit opinions, and we have been out of troubled housing authority status for five years, but you're talking about 20 years of mismanagement, unfortunately. So we are moving forward. Scattered site history, 848,000 has been used to renovate scattered site homes. The average cost is 25 to 45. In 2010, Wycomico County Housing Authority applied for a grant with the National Affordable Housing Program. We were denied because HUD wouldn't take a second. So the reason why this RAD program's working is because the capital's coming from the male and low-income tax credit and their investors. The scattered site, the money's gonna, to renovate those units, that money's gonna come from Bank of Delmarva. They have signed a letter of intent that they will loan us $3 million, because HUD, remember, HUD does not have the capital to renovate these homes. So that means we don't have the capital renovate these homes. But now HUD, with the RAD program, is releasing their lien so that the Bank of Delmarva can have place first on these liens. And the same thing with low-income tax credit.
So you're gonna be borrowing $3 million from the Bank of Delmarva to renovate these?
Correct. Assuming we get awarded RAD, because we've applied for RAD, we're on a waiting list, they have to raise that number of units.
But the $3 million will go to the scattered sites?
Absolutely.
All scattered sites?
And there was a number-crunching exercise that we went through as an authority to determine how much money we needed to renovate all nine homes. Even though some are occupied, they need to be renovated to market as well. And the RAD, the HUD financing, is what they will subsidize for us to be able to pay our loan back.
And the $3 million covers all 90, correct? Yeah.
Whether they're occupied or vacant.
Is that loan callable? Most of Delmarvas are callable after three to five years. Is that a fixed loan?
I think it's gonna be for 15 years, because that's what the RAD contract will be for. So they want to work with HUD and what their financing would be as well.
And the rate is what?
Well, I think that's negotiable once we get the award.
So HUD?
Obviously, we want it to be affordable, because we're only gonna get so much for subsidy.
Right. HUD is allowing the homes that the Bank of Delmarva will fund, Bank of Delmarva will have the first?
Correct. And that's the difference, what's happening now with HUD, because remember, they do not have the money to renovate these homes. They don't have the grants to put out to these housing authorities across the country. So that's why you have investors and banks that now have to front the money to rehab them, or in our case, demolish them and reinvent affordable housing. And then the subsidy comes with, the family will only pay 30% of their income for rent and utilities. So if they're only paying, let's say, $100 in rent, then HUD brings in the subsidy to make up the difference, so then we have the income to pay back a mortgage.
And the investors will get a tax credit.
Correct.
And there's a lot of low-housing developments around the nation that people do invest in, just for this main reason.
And it's a wonderful way to grow capital.
What are the chances of this, well, you haven't gotten to it yet, but the unit cap, what are the chances of that being raised this year? Because that seems to be a linchpin in this whole thing working.
It is. But from my understanding, the 60,000 units that have already been awarded are being, are successful, including what we already have for the 100 units of Booth Street. So I think it's just a matter of, I think September is a big target for them to approve and raise the cap. They could always choose a different number, higher, we'd like it higher versus lower, but, you know, it's, I wish I had a crystal ball, but I don't. And I also want the council to understand that in 2012, Wycomico County Housing Authority had a business plan to spend $500,000 on scattered site, and that would have renovated 10 homes. And unfortunately, HUD pulled the focus back and wanted us to concentrate on Booth Street, because it was a higher-density housing. So we had to switch gears. We had signed contracts to renovate homes. So they're our funder. Push come to shove, Narsinda had to make a decision. But I want you to know that that was our game plan, and we wanted to move forward with that, because everybody wants to live in a single-family home.
Before you move forward, had you already started any? And the reason I'm asking is because some of the homes had, you know, the, like, the black boards on the windows, and something was happening in the inside. Was that process started at all, or just nothing occurred?
Oh, we had renovated a few. We'd already started the process. I negotiated a cooperative agreement with Montgomery County, with their procurement office, because they do major renovations to their homes, and we're eight people. We don't have a procurement department. So we save a lot of money by working with them, and I call it piggybacking, off of their procurement activity, because they, it's their advertising dollars, it's their Title X, it's their minority interest. They do all that paperwork, and they have it all fine-tuned, even down to what faucet to buy, to renovate a unit, and what the cost is. So they've done the legwork, and it's amazing, the contractual. So we enter into a cooperative agreement, and that contract, and we also get the volume, like a McDonald's volume, because their Montgomery County is a high-performing housing authority. So we partner with them so that we can expedite our procurement activity and get the contractor in there. We don't want to wait six, if this RAD gets awarded and we get the $3 million from Bank of Delmarva, we don't want to wait. We want to have that cooperative agreement in place so that we don't have to, we spend 60, 90 days advertising. We get that contractor, and we're in the first house the next day. So we had that in place before to spend the $500,000. Unfortunately, we then had to use the contractor at Booth Street.
So for the ones that were done, you had indicated that some of them were completed. Are you saying now that those need to be a part of this 90 units prepared again, I mean, homes repaired again?
Well, we already made them livable.
Okay.
And that's a key word, because what we're striving for is amenity-rich, energy-efficient, cable-ready, so that children have, you know, the internet's right there. So we're striving for a market-rate unit. And when they were renovated, unfortunately, the money was, we had to go by volume, so...
Okay. Do you have a specific number, how many were renovated?
I don't have that. I have a nice Excel spreadsheet, but I don't have that.
If you could get that for me, I would appreciate it. I've heard so many constituents over the years, I like to have something.
We have before and after pictures, and you even have before and after pictures of Booth Street.
Sure.
So you can, even some of those have been renovated, some still have the boards, but you certainly can see where it's gonna go with the new $17 million project.
Well, I appreciate the update on all this. As you had mentioned years ago, it was under mismanagement, and I was on the council at that time, and I went over to Booth Street and visited some of the residents there. And, you know, the board really came together and tried to, you know, straighten a lot of things out, and then HUD dubbed it as troubled. So I'm very glad to hear that it is out of that category right now, and it seems like you have a good plan. And is, one question that I have is, now, are you physically over at Booth Street? Is that where your office is?
I do have an office at Booth Street, but I am shared with another housing authority as their executive director.
Okay. Which housing authority is that?
It's called Galena Arden Housing Authority, it's in PG County.
Prince George's County?
Prince George's County.
Yeah. Okay. So how often are you down here?
Well, I'm here Mondays and Tuesdays. With all the redevelopment efforts, I'm down here much more often, you know, whether it's Thursdays, there's the zoning, you know, the zoning council.
Do, does the Wycomico County Housing Authority have a full board right now?
Yes. Five-member board.
Five-member board, and there is a chair, and?
Yes. Vice chair.
And is there, do they have a maintenance person at Booth Street?
Yes.
Okay. So who oversees all that when you're not here?
I oversee it. But there's also two people, there's what I call the person who manages the inside and a person who manages the outside. And they both report to me, and I troubleshoot any issues. In the days of telecommuting, it's just, it's easy for me, I mean, I've done it for eight years, so, so it just works. They are looking for a full-time executive director, someone that's there full-time.
Right, I understand.
And just understand, even in the interim, 24/7, seven days a week for both housing authorities. So 25 years of expertise, I think I can definitely manage in the interim, without a doubt.
Well, and I want to thank you for taking this on right now until they hire somebody.
It is, I take a deep breath. But I just love to talk about it.
I can tell.
But I, I want to share one thing, because I'm an accountant by trade, so I pull numbers, and they change because people's income changes. And they will not pay any more than 30% of their income for rent and utility. So if they lose a job or get a second job, you know, we're very, that affects our income. And right now, of the leased homes in scattered site, and the majority of them are three-bedroom, the average rent from the tenant is $191 for a single-family home. HUD subsidy for that, because it's a public housing program, is $307. So each month, we get $498. Now, if you compare that to the housing choice voucher or the Section 8 program, that landlord for a three-bedroom, the fair market rent is $1,126. So we operate at 45% of what a Section 8 landlord operates. So they, and I'm sure everybody knows, either whether it's a multifamily landlord, or whether you know someone that owned a townhouse and they upgraded to a larger, single-family home, but they decided to rent that townhouse, they are getting $1,126. So they're being made whole. So they can pay their mortgage. Think about us operating at 45%. So if you want to talk about endurance and patience, we have to manage our money extremely well. When I, when I listen to the health care that you had earlier, and you have a contingency fund, we only have eight employees, but guess what? Our health care costs went up. We have to manage it. We don't have a contingency fund. When water bills go up, electric bills, when the gasoline goes up. So if you want to talk about micromanaging, we definitely have to do it. We may not have a mortgage, but we do have to manage on 45% of what a Section 8 landlord does. And the reason why the RAD program works is because then we become a project-based Section 8 landlord, 100 units of Booth Street. So we will be getting a higher subsidy to manage, to increase our income. So as you hear, we try to run it like a business. So as any of the other business owners that you know through Wycomico County, they're always looking for ways to increase their revenue, manage their costs, it's exactly what we do. So anyhow, I'm very excited about Booth Street. You have architectural renderings, you have the financial numbers, and anytime, you can call, email.
Do I have any further questions?
No, I just want to say, when they came before the planning commission, with the, I'm gonna say, the variance on the parking, we also, we also asked them some other questions, and it just sounds like a lot of thought has gone into the planning of this Booth Street and making sure that the residents are okay, you know, being moved out of their current units, and children, you know, with schools, and they've given a lot of thought to how this is all going to work and take place. It's not just, not just renovating, it's a lot of thought to the people that also live there, the residents that live there.
Absolutely. Because remember, we serve people, so...
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I don't know if you mentioned it already, but what's the timeline for finding out about the RAD program, the award, I'm sorry?
Well, the Booth Street's been awarded.
That's been awarded, okay. And there was one that you were waiting on?
That was awarded December of 2012. I'm looking at you like you're doing it. December of 2012. And we have not been awarded the RAD for scattered site, but the good thing is, we're on the waiting list. There are many housing authorities across the country did not make the waiting list.
So what's the anticipation?
I wish it were tomorrow. But that's why it's so important, if you read through your packet, that there are boilerplate letters, if you know anybody that, or you want to talk about it and learn about it, because we really do need efforts to have them pass that. And I understand even through that information that's in here, September should be a target date for them to raise, what they call raise the cap, which is raise the number of units that will be funded. So respectfully, you know, I hope you can approve the PHA plan for 2014. You just know we're way late, so 2015's gonna be right around the corner, but it's gonna be almost a mirror image of what you're seeing with the 2014.
Do I have any concerns that would, that need to be addressed before we would agree to approve this plan?
We just have to get consensus, right? Because we're in a work session. We'll have to come back and legislate.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure if there are any concerns that we get them out on the table now.
I guess, I guess my thoughts, when we're talking about the scattered sites, if you've got 90, and you say there's 30-plus that's sitting empty, that needs, that's empty due to the fact they need so much repair that they can't, you might want to consider looking at maybe disposing more than just two, and using the money to bring some of the others up to livable conditions.
Okay.
That might be something that's, from a business sense, if I was a businessman with 90 rental homes and couldn't keep them, you know, in repair, I would look at saying, hey, okay, let's get rid of 10 or 12, and bring the others up to standards, you know, and get the others so you could rent them, and get, start bringing money out of the others. So, I mean, I've not looked at the homes. But I do know that we're getting some complaints from some of the municipalities about them being boarded up, and some of the neighbors, so it would be, you know, a good move to show some movement there, that we are trying to get something done. And I praise you for your service in getting this taken care of.
Right, thank you. And we'll look into it, we'll definitely look into more.
Yeah. I just think that's a small number, when you're talking about having 30-plus homes sitting there.
But I want that $3 million.
I understand that, I understand that.
And I understand too, and if that RAD, if we weren't on the waiting list, we would act, we would have to be a business person, and we would have to go that route, there's no doubt. To sell more than two, and just go through that lengthy process, but that doesn't happen overnight, and that's not the answer that...
So HUD has to approve you selling those homes?
Yes. And there's quite a process, from what I understand. And it's working with Chicago, but, you know, once we learn it with two, if the RAD doesn't come through, then we, you know, have a Plan B, and that definitely will be part of Plan B, without a doubt. And we apologize for that, but it's...
Any other?
Yeah, unanimous approval from your board members as well, on this plan?
Yes. And I have it assigned here, if you want.
Any other?
Just that I think council, along with the county exec, ought to work on a letter, a supporting letter.
Yes. For the increase in the cap.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's what I'm...
I see the passion.
Oh, I love it. I love what I do, so, thank you. Thank you for your...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next on our agenda, we're gonna have...
You want this brought back to our next meeting?
What's that?
You want the plan brought back to your next meeting?
Yes. Council, ready for the, the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. All right. So next, we're gonna work on Resolution 117-2014, and that's the power purchase agreement and the performance guarantee agreement with SolarCity Corporation. And with us, we have Lee Beecham.
Lee Beecham, Public Works Director, Wycomico County.
Thank you.
Now, if my understanding is correct, it was pulled from our agenda because some council members had questioned?
Yes.
On the agreement?
That's right.
Okay. What were some of the questions?
I do not know. Does anybody?
Well, I can give you one.
Sure.
Exhibit one, item 10, purchase option, fair market value.
Item 10, yes.
Is that what type of question you're looking for?
Yes. Exhibit one, number 10, purchase option.
Item number 10.
Yeah.
The buy-out option.
Yeah, the buy-out.
Okay.
I read something later about it's determined by a professional agency that does buy-outs all the time. How many buy-outs have they been of purchase plans like this since it's such a new option, and generally, they run for 20 years?
Sure.
So since these solar projects have only been in existence for 15 years, how can you determine what fair market value is going to be in 20 years?
Obviously, they can tell on the...
Sure.
Since these solar projects have only been in existence for fifteen years, how can you determine what fair market value is going to be in twenty years?
Obviously, they can tell on the purchase price of the equipment and they do a, uh, a standard depreciation practice on that. And they also can tell the degradation rate on the solar panels, so you know what your production's going to be. So that is also factored into the, the buyout cost. So based on your, it's, it's more based on your production rate that's available at the particular site. Uh, I will clarify that this particular PPA that you're looking at is just for the landfill borrow pit site. Uh, we also have a PPA that will be presented to you for the, uh, Delmark Convenience Center site as well. So the one, the one that we're looking at right now is for the landfill borrow pit. Because I, I believe you're looking at a price of buyout after six years of two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. I'm sorry, two million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand.
I have some questions on the, on the contract also. On, we're at, we're at four and a half cents per kilowatt.
Yes.
Okay, now it states in the contract if for some reason things go down and they're not able to deliver us the power to the power point, we then buy back from DPNL at what rate? Are they going to guarantee the four point five percent? Should we buy at market rate then?
No, yes, if you look at the, uh, performance guarantee attachment, the PPA, and then there's a, uh, uh, sorry, performance guarantee agreement.
What pages are they?
That should be, was that exhibit?
Page one.
Exhibit B.
B.
Exhibit B. Exhibit B.
Okay. I apologize, I don't have your package in front of me, but.
Same thing.
Okay. Uh, in there, uh, Bob, there's, it talks about what the guaranteed production rate is of the facility. And, uh, basically SolarCity has to pay us back at whatever the market rate we're buying the power if they're not able to produce the, the, uh, outlined, uh, generation. So for example, let's say in year two, they don't meet that guaranteed kilowatt hours of, um, fifteen million. They, they fall short of that. They would then, uh, they would reimburse us the cost for us to buy power on the market at market rates.
Up to that.
Up to that threshold.
Do we have a guaranteed amount that we have to purchase from SolarCity?
Well, we're buying a, we are purchasing, let's see what says it in here. Well, yes, we're, we're, we're guaranteeing that we're going to buy fifteen million kilowatts for, yeah.
Okay, so we're guaranteed.
And there's, there's a, there's a megawatts, uh, that that translates into, and that's kind of the, the number we use for.
How do you, how do you arrive at this figure?
Uh, we've looked at all the meters, the, the, this, uh, electric meters that the county, uh, uses and utilizes. And we've come up with a, an aggregated net metering demand or consumption. And then we looked at how much facility, how much land that we have available to site facilities. And that's where we come, came up with what our guaranteed rate would be.
And can you add more meters?
We can certainly add as much as we can, um, utilize, but we cannot go over our, our, um, energy consumption. So we can't become an energy generator.
Right, right. Nobody wants that.
No, no.
Wants the excess energy, yeah. Uh, now, is it only county, uh, that is involved in this? There's no city, none of their affiliates?
Well, I could cer, I could cer, I could certainly, sure, I could certainly tell you that, uh, we've been working very closely with the Board of Ed and the City of Salisbury. Uh, they're actually going to piggyback on our agreement. So this is, uh, important that we hash out any issues that we do have with this agreement because, uh, there's sub- substantial savings at the Board of Le, Board of Ed level and also the City of Salisbury level, uh, once we get this agreement worked out.
Is that determined?
No, they're separate, separate agreements.
Fifteen million?
By piggyback, he means they're going to use the same agreement, but they're going to have their own.
They're going to have their own agreement, yes.
I'm sure it doesn't have anything to do with the fifteen million.
No, it does not. They don't have anything to do with our consumption, but the structure of the agreement we'd like to utilize to save taxpayer dollars in, in preparing the documents.
Yeah. Okay, after I'm finished, uh, asking my questions, Stevie wanted me to ask.
Stevie didn't want you to ask.
I know. When, now we're, we're guaranteeing that we're going to receive, uh, kilowatt at, uh, four point five percent.
Four point five cents per kilowatt hour.
Per kilowatt hour. And if we don't reach that, what's the penalty going to be?
Well, that, that's what they're agreeing to, to, for us to buy the power from. That's the, that's the power purchase agreement price.
But if we don't attain a certain amount of kilowatts or purchase a certain amount of kilowatts, there's a penalty, correct?
Sure, there is a, a penalty.
And that should be on page two of that, uh, Section B.
Section B or?
Yes, so, again, if, if you see Section E, it talks about guaranteed energy pricing. Uh, so again, if, looking at that tiered approach that you had in Section C, where it says what your guaranteed consumption is, and then your, your guaranteed production is thirty, is.
Three point nine.
Three, is point three nine cents per kilowatt hour for the first five years. And then, uh, if we don't meet our demand in the following years, then the price goes up from there.
All right, what, uh, there are additional charges on top of this, uh, four point, uh, five cents per kilowatt? What additional charges will we have? They're carrying charges?
Actually, there's less charges because we'll be producing this power on-site, so we will not be paying any transmission costs. So when you look at our avoided costs, I have it on my, the, the previous PowerPoint that we went through at the last, uh, work session, we talked about what our avoidance costs were. Um, and when you look at our, there's no upfront cost, zero upfront cost to the county. Our PPA rate is at point zero five cents per kilowatt, and we're looking at a zero escalator. So when you start to look at the energy prices, uh, there's some savings there. Our grid avoidance costs, what we were, are paying on the grid is point zero eight, zero five cents per kilowatt. So we're almost cutting our energy bill in half.
Yes, Lee.
Yes.
So if we generate the electricity at the landfill and we buy it at the government office building, there's no, there's no transmission.
That is correct, because we're virtual net metering. That is a program that's been established by the, uh, Maryland Legislature, uh, in, in accordance with the Public Service Commission agreements. And that, that's the po, that's the, the law that's in place to allow us to do that. It's called aggregated net metering.
Is that anywhere in Wycomico County?
That is anywhere in Wycomico, it's anywhere in the, in the, in the state of Maryland, basically. Because it's, it's the county that owns and pays for the meters, the, the electricity that goes through those meters. And we can combine up to twenty meters. Obviously, we have mu, many more meters than twenty meters in the county system, but we would combine up to twenty meters for, for each project. So that's where we get that aggregated net metering. So if you look at our large demand users, you've got the landfill complex, you've got the, uh, Rhodes Division Complex Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office, uh, and, and Corrections Facility, and obviously the GOB is, is a large user. So we would look to combine the largest twenty meters in the county and provide the savings to those meters based on their, prorated on their consumption. So while the landfill may be a larger user, they're going to receive a larger portion of the savings because they're the larger, larger user.
How much are we using now, electricity?
We use around three megawatts or so.
What's the dollar amount?
Dollar amount. Uh, again, I could, I could certainly get you that information, but we're, we're.
Save half of that?
Yes, so when you look at our grid avoidance cost and, and we're paying basically twice what the PPA is, we're going to save around, just on the landfill site alone, we're going to save, uh, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars per year.
Okay, that's one of the figures you gave us, one hundred thousand. So that's just on the landfill.
So the, the term, the first year's payment through the PPA would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're going to be saving, or I'm sorry, so current electric bill without the PPA would be around a two hundred and ten thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, excuse me.
Does that work, Steve?
Uh, okay, double check the numbers. I'm going through bills, but on a kilowatt hour basis, not a dollar basis.
Yeah, that, that's, that's really what, Steve, Steve's going about it the right way. You have to look at the kilowatt usage, uh, because the dollar amount can fluctuate based on the, the cost of energy. Whereas now we're looking at a flat rate for twenty years for our cost of energy. So there is some pretty significant savings there.
Also helps with budgeting, doesn't it, Andy?
Exhibit C says, uh, maintenance of premises, says we're responsible, we are responsible for maintenance and repair of the premises electrical system.
Uh, in the PPA? I'm sorry, what section was that in?
It was just listed under Exhibit C. I'm sorry, I don't remember. Must have been.
I don't, I don't have any.
Now, what's Exhibit C? Are you talking about?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, purchase in the PPA, uh, item number eight, C.
Eight, C.
Eight, C.
Nope, there's no eight, C.
There's no eight, C. What, what you looking at?
Purchasers' rights and obligations, is that under?
Maintenance of premises.
Maintenance of premises.
Eight, C.
Yeah, I see that. Eight, C, yep.
We're responsible for maintenance and repair of the premises electrical system.
What that refers to is the, um, the facility that, that the electricity's being consumed by. So, a, and, and also getting the power from the, the grid that they produce, the power, the, uh, the generation. Yes, so we have to maintain the system to get it out to the point of where it goes onto the grid.
Okay.
That's, that's our requirement. But, but inside of their facility that they're generating power, the, um, the seller, the supplier will be maintaining. And I also will mention that in this price includes, um, uh, grass cutting and any other maintenance activities around the fence or any of the facilities that are involved in this process. So there won't be any county dollars spent on cutting the grass at these facilities, which also means there's, there's, reduces our liability and our risk that one of our contractors or one of our employees could damage the array and then cost the county more money because this will be on the, uh, on the developer, so.
Our, our making obligation is for the transmission line from the, from the, uh, solar cell collector to the power company?
From the transformer.
From the, from, from the transformer. So wherever they're going to be, wherever that net meter is, that, so there's going to be a meter that's put in, a smart meter that sees that the power's being pushed back into the grid. So from, from that point to, to their facility, to the fence line on their facility will be our, will be our maintenance responsibility. Because we're going to lease them an area at the landfill or the Delmar Convenience Center. But once it gets out of that lease area, that's where our responsibility takes over to, to maintain the facility.
Electric line someplace, is that for me?
Underground or above-ground electric line, yes. It's not been determined yet.
Two-way.
Two-way smart meter. And then once it gets to the meter, then it becomes the power company's responsibility as it would be in any other application for power distribution.
Well, what kind of cost would that be? What, what could it be? What's the worst-case scenario?
Uh, obviously, you know, that would be covered under a misutility locate. We would have that information on a, uh, on, on record. So we would have any, if there's any excavation work done, we'd certainly have that marked out. Um, again, if a contractor hit one of our facilities, they would certainly be responsible for paying for that. It's no different than if, if, uh, we damaged one of, uh, the power company's lines when we're out doing an excavation. We get a contractor in there, we make the repairs and we pay for it.
Okay, and that leads into Exhibit Four, Section Seven, Item H, uh, maintenance of premises. Again, uh, purchasers' rights and obligations, it says the purchaser is fully responsible for the maintenance and repair of the premises electrical system and all of the purchaser's equipment that utilizes the system's output. So we have to ensure their, uh, electric, their product?
No, we have to make sure that we're getting the power they're generating from their system, which is leased behind the meter.
Right.
To the power meter. So that, so again, they're, they're in their, their box. They've got a fence around their facility. Once it crosses into the county, county maintained property, then we have to maintain it until we get to the meter.
What kind of justice are you talking about?
No, I'm, I'm fine. Go back to the part where, where they would have to pay us back. What was that for? If something happened, they would have to refund us money. Well, that, that came up a few minutes ago.
So if the facility fails to generate power as it is designed and we have guarantees outlined in the power, the performance guarantee agreement, then they would pay us, basically they'd reimburse us for the, the price we have to go and buy the power out on the open market.
Okay, now this, the other ni, the other night when that gentleman was here the other day, he made the statement that they were basically home installers and that's what they had been doing. And they were new to this, um, and this is, you know, when somebody, when you get a phone call and somebody tells you, hey, I got a deal for you and it's not going to cost you a dime, it sends the red flags up pretty quick.
Sure.
Um, and, and I understand all you, I think I do, you know, how this, this is supposed to work. But I guess my question is, have we studied whether they would have the ability to pay us if that, if that situation came about? And we'll, you know, um, I don't know what, how big the company is, I don't know anything about their financials, but, um, at some point in time, if this didn't work, it could really, um, they could really owe us some money. And do they have the ability to pay us? Has there been any?
Sure, uh, that's not a problem. We can talk about that. Uh, basically, SolarCity is the largest solar power provider, both residential and commercial, uh, probably in, in the United States. Uh, they are publicly traded.
He said the other day that they hadn't done much commercial work.
Okay, they.
They were new to this.
Uh, he, what he said was in Wycomico County, they have not done any public work in Wycomico County. They've got, have fifty home installations, fifty home installations in Wycomico County. Uh, they have done for, um, Queen Anne's County, they have a, a very similar array that they just commissioned and was installed, uh, about six months ago. Uh, certainly talked with my counterparts there and they've been very, very happy with the, with the performance of the system and SolarCity to date. Uh, they have a facility in, um, Town Centerville that's a smaller facility, but obviously is providing power for the Town of Centerville. Also very excited and, and happy to work with that system. They have other, other facilities in other parts of Maryland that are, are up and functioning. Um, again, they have a large residential market foothold here, but they, they don't have a large presence in the, uh, public sector. And again, I think with Wycomico County, uh, Board of Ed and the City of Salisbury going on board and doing a project together, I think that really helps us all aggregate our risks together and, and really avoid, avoid risk there with that, uh, collaboration.
They just, uh, did one for lower shore shelter workshop, uh, which of course is a lot smaller than we are. And it seems like there are a lot of independent companies that do this. But when you get involved with something our size, I see where we're working with Anaheim, California, which is the main office. So I would assume it will be a little bit different than working with the company out of Delaware. There's one out of Salisbury also.
Just to, just to reiterate how this project came about, uh, we did a very extensive vetting process and we actually went out for an RFP with this project, uh, in February. And there were five bidders that came to the, the table with a proposal. And we went through our vetting process, uh, Rick Conrad, Andy Mackel, myself, a couple other key staff members went through the proposals. And, uh, this project has been vetted, uh, very, very extensively. I'm sure Mr. Baker can talk a little bit about the extensive, uh, legal review that we've gone through to make sure that this is an airtight project for the county and is really going to be a huge benefit to the county. So we're talking about a, a three million dollar savings over the life of this project. Uh, and that's a, that's a pretty big, pretty big help. We're looking at that year after year in our budgets in the future.
Yep. You're saying a three million dollar over the twenty years?
Over the twenty years. We're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings per year at, at the scale we're looking at now. Uh, and this would cover about twenty to thirty percent of our electricity, uh, demand. And we could certainly expand the project if we found other properties that were, other sites that we wanted to utilize.
Go along, go along with Joe's questions here. They want us to furnish them with financial review, audit statements, balance sheet, income statement, cash flow. Are they going to furnish the same to us?
Uh, they're a publicly traded company, so we could certainly ask for that information. If you feel it's appropriate, I can certainly get that information.
I just feel like if they're going to check us to that point.
Sure.
Maybe we should. You have a question? I'm going to go back on another point. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. Mine's.
Well, I guess, I, I guess Mr. Baker has done this contract. Do you feel that that satisfactory is written?
Well, we, excuse me, my office looked at, uh, the routine things that we look at and we've read it. Uh, but we also hired Funk and Bolton, Michael.
Forlini.
Forlini, uh, who has done many, many of these agreements and he was a primary negotiator. So, yeah, we spent several hours in person and several hours in phone conversations to get the wording down exactly the way we wanted it.
So this has been approved by Funk and Bolton?
Yes.
This contract has been, has written?
Yeah.
Um, my question is now I'm going to go back towards the landfill. The placement of these, if I'm, if I'm understanding, if I go on the collector road, the big pond that's there is going to kind of go back up on the, where the little finger is, it's going to go, that's.
Yeah. Well, close, it's actually going to go back towards Route Fifty a little further. Uh, I apologize if we can't all see this, but I'll kind of pass this around. So what we're looking at here, Bob, is the, uh, Route Fifty, the West Side Collector Road.
And this is the section where we're looking to install the solar panels. Obviously, this, this is, has been reduced in size since this image was taken, but we've still got all of this capacity available for cover material at the landfill. Right now, we have calculations to show us we're at about twenty-seven years of capacity in the bar pit, of material capacity left. So, this area would, would be that last, last small sliver.
Let's consider that triangle, I guess, with a finger, that?
Right in here.
That, that's the next twenty-seven years.
This, this, all this capacity, yeah. What we've done is we've got a long stick excavator, a sixty foot length excavator, and we're able to now excavate down to around thirty feet, which we were only able to do about fifteen feet before. And that allows us to really extend the life of the bar pit and get some more material there.
So, we'll be able to continue this way for the next twenty-five years? We don't have to go out and get dirt for fill?
Correct, and, and we, we do receive a lot of fill material from the community, whether it's a construction project, for example, the Royal Farms that's going on right now, being built on Parsons Road. We're receiving material from them to use as, as topsoil for seeding the landfill. And that's a huge savings for us because they truck the material in. We don't have any handling costs other than placing the material. So, we always look for opportunities like that where we can get material from the community. And that, again, just extends our, our useful life of the bar pit. I will tell you, we're very fortunate, and a lot of landfills don't have a bar pit right next to the landfill. So, it's, it's almost a blessing and a curse. And, you know, we do try to keep an eye on how much material we're using and, and keep it to a minimum. So, it, it is nice to have that material, but at the same time, it is always nice to have a restriction there to keep us from, from using all of, all of our material.
Lee, what will be your level of participation with the Board of Education to learn what type of savings they may incur?
Sure, we have, they've actually been involved with our negotiations on our first few meetings with Funk and Bolton, because we did wanna streamline this process. They're, obviously, they're ready to go as soon as we come to an agreement at the county level. They're looking at similar savings with size, they're looking at around two hundred thousand dollars a year in savings. Don't quote me on that, that really depends on how significant of a project they do. But, also, with their part, project, they're looking to do some real educational pieces and maybe even have a, a curriculum that, that involves the solar project and, and how it works and, and what, you know, really, just, just improvement in, in student participation in there.
I have another, another question, and I, maybe more, Mr. Baker, this is more to you. The piece about the taxes, it says that the purchaser, which is Wycomica County, shall reimburse seller for any and all taxes assessed. We, we own the land, right? So, there's no property taxes? Okay, personal property taxes?
Yeah, we're taking responsibility for that. It's essentially a wash.
So, we don't have to worry about that?
Right.
Manufacturing taxes?
Uh, don't forget to be in manufacturing taxes.
So, there, so there really would be no taxes, even though this little piece is in here?
That's correct, and we, we modeled this, this procedure off of Queen Anne's County. They took a very similar approach to the, the tax liability. And really, that had to do with getting us the best price and looking at the exposure that, that we would have to any tax liability. We were looking at almost a cent more in cost to, to have, to, to have SolarCity take on that tax liability, and we didn't feel that that was really worth the savings, or worth the cost to do that. I mean, there's no tax liability. Everything's a wash as far as first property.
Just wanted to make sure, because, you know, sometimes there are things that pop up after.
I read somewhere in the contract, what happens if state or federal law puts some type of tax on a per kilowatt hour? Are we then responsible for that tax?
If, if that ever happened, which, again, they're promoting solar power and would like to continue to cease growth in solar power over the next twenty, thirty, forty years, there would certainly be something that we would look at as, as a possible tax burden. But, when you look at the savings, Bob, you're talking about saving half your energy costs. Again, that, that risk, I think outweighs the, or the savings outweigh the risk there for future tax burden.
So, we might be talking about a sun tax.
Yeah, exactly, a sun tax, they'll go to the rain tax, and then a cloud tax, maybe.
Give them any ideas?
We would be paying that, Andy.
I doubt we'd get any of it, state would want it.
Right. Sound like you're getting the commission.
Any other?
Yeah, just one last thing. As far as repairs, the company is located where? How does, how would that take place?
Sure, they have a presence in, it's outside the Beltway, I'm gonna say, Green, Greenbelt or Frederick, I'm sorry, Frederick, they're in Frederick. And they would obviously have equipment here on the eastern shore servicing other facilities that they could come down and service the equipment. They also have remote telemetry that they can monitor the equipment from their facility. We're, we're using a technique with the inverters that we're able to monitor all the equipment on each string as opposed to having one large inverter, which if that inverter went down, we would, obviously, the entire array would be down. But, we're using smaller inverters on each string. So, we're able to much more accurately monitor, or they're able to monitor what our, our power delivery is and how much power they're producing on the facility.
And you have access to that as well?
Yes, we will actually, the, the hope was that we would have a kiosk down in the, in the lobby of the government office building, and we could have a display that's showing what our, our power consumption is in real time. So, residents, as they came in and could see what, what our savings was on that.
Lee, is there any reason why we can't put the panels on top of the landfill? It's already been capped. It seems like that would be an ideal place to put them, you know, it's not using it anymore. You can't use it for anything else.
Sure, sure.
You can build houses on it or put buildings in it.
And we, we certainly, that was our original proposal, was to do that. And we started getting the prices back, and it was actually gonna be more expensive for us to do it that way because they can't pierce the liner with a cap on the landfill. So, they have to use ballasted panels, and the cost to do that was astronomical.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
The public hearing on the site locations that I guess we're required to have, Mr. Baker? Have the residents around these areas been notified that, or somehow do they have an indication that we're having a public hearing and this may be in their backyard?
Certainly, a public hearing, we will notify all the adjacent property owners by direct mailing. And also, as much publicity as this, as we can, we'd certainly like to have any, any neighborhood buy-in or, or input from the residents. We'd certainly appreciate it.
Is there a reason that, we were, we were asked to approve this tonight? I mean, I, I just question, why are we, are we rushing too fast? I mean, I guess, you've been studying this for a while, no doubt. This was just brought to us two weeks ago.
Sure, and, and the hope was, again, because of the, the nature of this and the, and the pricing that we received, I'll tell you now that Queen Anne's didn't get this pricing. And it maybe, that's just because they, that the timing, they, they came along into the, into the process, they didn't receive the best pricing. All the consultants that have been involved with solar projects that I've talked to have told me that you're crazy not to take this price. Again, we're looking at half the cost of our, our electricity. The hope was that we could have a work session, approve it, and then work through the site details. Because, obviously, we can't get into the nitty-gritty of this until we've got, until SolarCity has assurances that we're gonna have a project here. And that's, that's really where we are. We, we would like to be under construction by the first of the, the calendar year. And I hope that if we can get this, this agreement worked out at the next council meeting, we can start to see some of those savings to the county by the beginning of the next fiscal year. So, we're talking about a hundred and ten thousand dollar savings off of one site that we could, we could inject into the budget for, for next year, so.
Man, I think that's great. The only thing is, is like I said, we're, we're asked to tie up this county for a twenty-year lease, and I just wanna make sure everybody understands what we're doing and do it in a carry.
And that's, and that's why we brought Funk and Bolton on board as well. We wanted to have somebody that had expertise on this. And I can tell you that Michael has done probably twenty of these projects and seen issues that you wouldn't even think about. I mean, when we told SolarCity that we had Michael involved, they kinda cringed a little bit because they knew he was gonna be hard on them. And we, you know, we've really have enjoyed working with Funk and Bolton, and they've been very helpful and very thrifty in putting this together.
Thrifty, how thrifty?
Obviously, it's a, it's a long-term contract, so we have to look at the long-term savings, but they've been very, very, very good to work with.
Well, attorney can eat up a hundred and eleven thousand.
Oh, we're not even anywhere near that, Bob. No, we're not even anywhere near that.
Their future savings about a second.
So, we're not anywhere near that, Bob. We're, we're only in, in five digits, so it's not a huge savings, not a huge cost.
We're off a hundred and eleven thousand savings the first year, we're down to in seventies.
No, we're much more than that.
It's only one site.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have, I'm sorry.
We have nineteen more years left, so.
That's right.
First year.
Any other questions for Lee?
Where, where, where did the money come from to pay Funk and Bolton? Would that come out of your budget?
Obviously, that's come out of the solid waste budget now, because we are the largest consumer of electricity in the county. But, depending on, and this should be the only upfront cost to us is to have a professional consultant, you know, go through the, the agreement. So, at that point, there wouldn't be any, any cost to the county, because, obviously, maintenance is gonna be covered by SolarCity. And any, any repairs or landscaping that needs to be done would be covered by them.
Well, I appreciate the research that you've done and put into this. And is council comfortable at this point to bring this back at our next meeting, this resolution?
I think so.
Okay, great.
If you have any questions between now and then, please feel free to talk to me, or we can, we can certainly go out to the sites and take a look.
Sure.
All right, great. Thank you.
Now, the only other thing I'm just gonna bring up, I think Melissa said the public hearing would be the six.
It has not been advertised, Gail.
That would be a day meeting.
Yeah, you guys had the flexibility to work through that tonight.
Where the seventh was gonna be a night meeting. So, do we need to decide on this now for advertisement, or?
Can we do it on the seventh? Was that, is that window?
Does that meet your three weeks?
Seventh of November?
I think we're in October.
October.
I think that's.
Oh, October.
You need a calendar?
It's the second today.
No, that's, no, I don't think so.
You got one calendar?
Oh, never mind.
Four weeks?
We wanna get it done before new council sits, because we had the.
May the surveys be done next week?
I could certainly get the surveying done next week.
Yeah.
Get out there myself.
On the seventh.
Okay, good.
So, this will come under your agenda, then, Mr. Baker?
And we're gonna have to have two public hearings on this one and then the one on the West Side site.
We're, we're, both of them is part of the same public hearing.
Both sites?
Yes.
We could leave it for the new council to decide if it's gonna jam us up.
Thanks, Lee.
Yep, thank you.
This time, we're gonna move into a closed work session with our attorney. Move into a closed? No, thanks, sir.